All right, and we are live. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Thursday, August 19th, 2021. Goodness, and welcome back to our Facebook page. My name is Michael Queedall, Digital Marketing Specialist for the New Jersey School Board Association. Once again, coming at you live through the power of Cisco Webex. GSP has been hosting Facebook Live events to address questions from boards, school administrators, and educators throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. If you want to replay any previous broadcasts we've had in the past, click the Videos tab on the left-hand side of our Facebook page, and make sure you click that Like button. You're already here, so you can be notified when we do go live in the future. Today's session is very special. During this session, we're going to be diving into the world of esports and esports in education with special guests from the Garden State Esports Organization. And we're going to be talking a little bit about what to expect in the coming year and in the fall and in the world of video games and education in general. We will be monitoring the comment section during and after the broadcast, so if you have a question or comment, just want to say hi and say where you're from, drop it in the comment section below, and I'll forward along to our experts. So whether you're a school board member, administrator, teacher, or even a parent, we are here to serve you and help you work through this ever-changing and frankly, difficult time that the past year and a half has been. Finally, I hope everyone and their families are okay and are healthy at this time. So, without further ado, it is my pleasure to introduce Chris Aviles, teacher at Monmouth Beach School and President of Garden State Esports. Good afternoon, Chris.
Mike, thank you so much for having us. How are you?
Doing great, doing great. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Wonderful. So, um, my name is Chris Aviles. Like Mike said, I am a STEM teacher at the Monmouth Beach School. A few years ago, I started the first middle school esports team in the country. And I was absolutely blown away by just the improved learning outcomes, the improved social-emotional learning, all of these great things that I saw when I started this team. And especially when COVID hit and my esports season wasn't canceled, right? My kids really confided in me that this was something that helped them deal with being home, not being able to see their friends. And with that extra time I had during COVID, I wanted to bring esports to all the schools in New Jersey. So I started a nonprofit with other educators here in New Jersey, and our goal is to spread esports to every school so that way every school can learn to use esports as a platform to help kids grow. And I asked two friends, two special guests, to kind of join me today and talk to our community here in New Jersey about the power of scholastic esports. And so I'm joined by Christine Wozniak, who's a teacher over at Cedar Creek High School, and Jim McCowen, who is a teacher up in Hapakcon. Both esports coaches, both working hard in the esports space and doing some great things. And I thought it would be fun to kind of talk about what we're doing with esports and what's new with Garden State Esports and how your school can join Garden State Esports and get ready to play with us in the fall for free. But Christine is a math teacher, and you know, as part of the Greater Egg Harbor School District, you were recently named esports supervisor?
Coordinator, but that's basically the same thing, I guess.
Fantastic. So what's going on at Cedar Creek and Appsgamie and Oak Crest?
Lots and lots. So you guys mentioned the pandemic. So, right before the pandemic, my school was was approached by EGF Electronic Gaming Federation to join their competitive league, but it costs a hundred dollars per student, so it's very expensive. The Board of Education did pay for three, between three and five of our students to play, so they were able to do that, but that's not something that we wanted to continue doing because it was very expensive. In March of 2020, obviously, everybody went virtual. So in order to stay connected with our students, we held some online tournaments while we were all on lockdown, and we actually made some new friends at some of the other local high schools. Came, well, they didn't actually come, but virtually came to play with us. Fast forward to this past school year, Cedar Creek, along with Appsgamie and Oak Crest, did continue to play Smash with EGF, but we had three students per school. They competed, and a few of them made it to playoff rounds, which we were really excited for. They were supposed to go to Disney World, but couldn't because obviously, everything was still kind of all locked down. We did know that we needed to find a more affordable option for esports, and we wanted to compete against schools that were in our local area rather than those from Texas and Washington and New York. Although there's, they're great places, we wanted to kind of, you know, stay here. Stay in New Jersey, stay in South Jersey. So in October of 2020, Ryan Connolly, who is the esports coach, I guess, from ACIT, contacted a few of the local schools via email, and he knew that we had esports teams and asked if we would be interested in forming a league. Chris Aviles was actually part of that email chain, and he invited us all to join Garden State Esports, which we ended up doing in January. So we were able to, at Cedar Creek, field teams for Overwatch, and we were also able to get a team together for Rocket League. So Ryan and I were invited to speak with the Cape Atlantic Athletic Directors. The Cape Atlantic League is basically the, a South Jersey league for traditional sports. And we asked the athletic directors to join Garden State Esports for esports, so we could create some of those same types of rivalries that traditional sports has for esports. So this past May was when we were able to do that. Mainland is now part of Garden State Esports. I think they were already, Cape May Tech is part of it. And then for this coming school year, our other two high schools in the district, so that would be Appsgamie High School in Galloway and Oak Crest in Maze Landing now have esports teams, so they will be part of Garden State Esports as well. So we're really excited that that is happening.
Yeah, and you know what I liked about when Christine reached out and kind of said the Cape Athletic League was looking for a home is because we're run, everybody in Garden State Esports is a teacher, right? And most of us have coached before. I've coached traditional sports here in New Jersey for 15 years. And one thing that we pride ourselves on is hyper-local competition, right? So we take these schools and we put them into conferences similar to what they play in traditional sports. So that way, they're seeing teams that they know, and they're building those rivalries. So I was really excited to be able to do that for Cal, and I'm excited to work with Christine to continue to grow esports in South Jersey. You know, we're at 130 school districts, which is almost a third of the state at this point. And then all the way on the other side of the state up north is Jim up in Hapakcon. And Jim's doing some really cool stuff, not just with his kids, not just around career technical education, which is a fantastic, you know, a fantastic bonus of bringing esports to your schools. It could really develop a cool CTE program. But I asked Jim to join the team early last school year, just because I was so blown away by what he's doing. And Jim and I have been working hard on the initiative for Garden State Esports. But Jim, like, all that you're doing at Hapakcon, man, what's going on up there?
Yeah, so, I mean, kind of like you said, the, when the pandemic hit, you know, we were all kind of looking for something to keep the kids engaged. And my superintendent, who was the assistant superintendent at the time, called me one afternoon and just out of the blue, kind of asked me, hey, what do you know about this esports thing? And, you know, we, we were able to put together a local, all-in-house Rocket League tournament that lasted for the last few months of the school year. And then we had like 65 kids between the middle school and high school participate. I ended up running two different tournaments for the different skill levels of the kids. And, you know, everybody had a lot of fun. And then over the summer last year, superintendent, assistant superintendent, wanted to continue to build on that. So I was able to form a, you know, full-on esports program at the high school. We were able to field multiple teams for multiple games between Rocket League, Overwatch, League of Legends. We had Minecraft stuff, you know, all sorts of good stuff going on. And, you know, as this esports program is continuing to evolve, this coming school year, I'll be teaching a class called Concepts of Gaming, which is kind of gonna, you know, blur those lines between what happens in education and what, you know, esports and scholastic esports is really capable of and all those connections. So we'll talk about, you know, health and well-being. We'll talk about the social-emotional learning connections. And, you know, we'll talk a lot about the CTE stuff as well. So I'm really excited about that. And then, you know, with Garden State Esports, we are, you know, putting some finishing touches on a CTE-minded curriculum that we've been working on for a while called Kodak. And it's all connected. It's all, you know, aligned to New Jersey state standards. We're kind of piggybacking off of the career pathways that NASEF has and really creating a whole series of, you know, modular, hands-on activities focused around all these different disciplines, you know, within the different categories. So you've got activities for content creators, you've got activities for entrepreneurs, organizers, strategists, you know, all these different kind of jobs, which we've, like I said, called disciplines. And then to kind of piggyback off of that, we're also working on developing a series of industry-based competitions, all geared around a lot of these CTE, you know, jobs and disciplines. So we have a lot of great partners. WeVideo is one of our great partners that all Garden State Esports schools are going to have access to. We've got a partnership with Twitch that gives GSE schools a lot of perks within the Twitch platform. And we're gonna, you know, use these partnerships and develop these industry-based competitions that will allow the kids to highlight these, you know, skills that can then transition into college opportunities, professional opportunities, you know, the whole, the whole nine yards. So really excited about all that.
I mean, it's pretty neat. You know, Mike, last time you had me on, one of the things that we talked about is how esports is more than just competition, right? You know, if you're not familiar with esports, it's video game-based competition. Your school plays another school. So it's a little bit different than a video game club. You know, it's meant to be an interscholastic match, and you know, that comes with the benefits, just like traditional sports of building community and leadership and teamwork skills and communication. But what is really cool about esports, what, you know, Jim is talking about, is you have this ability to bring in career and technical education by building this team behind the team. You know, Christine mentions that she teaches math and especially stats. You know, just like traditional sports, when you're listening to baseball or football, they come up with the craziest stats of, you know, hits, you know, who hit the most home runs on a Friday on a full moon. You can do similar stat work with esports. And so these kids, you know, we're taking something that they love, video gaming, and we're teaching them what we want them to know. So, you know, one of the disciplines that we have is a statistician. You know, how does a statistician collect the data that, you know, we need to help people understand, you know, the game? And then that statistician can transfer the information over to the casters who call the action, like Jim said, you know, on a Twitch stream while the game is going on. And so not only is it, you know, that video game competition, but there's also that career and technical side. There's also kids getting hands-on experience, you know, with jobs in the esports ecosystem. One of the things I always say is you can't be serious about STEM without being serious about esports. And so we're really excited to roll out the CTE curriculum. We're really excited to roll out these Kodak contests, we call them. Right now, it looks like we're going to be starting with a logo design contest, right? And so teachers can integrate that if they have a graphic design program. With WeVideo, we're going to do a contest around making the best highlight videos in video games. And then we're working with some other partners, you know, like Epic, to do some stuff in Twin Motion, which is an interactive 3D program. So it's really cool to be able to integrate the CTE stuff through esports, you know, into class during the day, after school, as part of club. And I'm really happy to announce that, you know, this was such a, I guess, new and exciting initiative that we're launching. The Gruden Foundation here in New Jersey gave us a big grant. So not only, to add that to the other grants we got over the last year, Garden State Esports is going to be free for, you know, forever at this point. We're going to be able to back up some of these contests with some cool prizes and opportunities. We're working hard to connect them with the college pathways because GSE has a lot of partnerships with colleges, so kids can find out, you know, how do they follow their passion for esports and graphic design into a career in the esports ecosystem? So it's really kind of neat to be able to build a robust esports program in New Jersey that doesn't just have the competition, but it also has the, you know, current technical education side of it, those additional bonuses that really helps school districts, you know, have those better learning outcomes that they're looking for for students. So there's a lot of really cool stuff going on. Pretty exciting. One thing I did want to talk about with Christine was, you know, Cedar Creek and Greater Egg Harbor jumping into the esports space. What was that process like? How did you guys go from, you know, not having a program to deciding you wanted to have a program? You went with some, you know, other leagues for a while, then you settled on Garden State Esports as being the answer. You know, for those watching, you know, that aren't familiar with esports and, you know, I don't know if you're a big gamer, Christine, but do you have to be a gamer to be an esports coordinator? Do you have to have these different, you know, ideas at your school? Like, how does it, how did it all roll out? Because I know every school's story is different.
You don't have to be a gamer. I was always watching my sister play games, and she was the big gamer. And I was the, I was the one that would be like, oh, hey, there's a, there's a block over there. Like, jump, jump just two spots to the right, and there should be a block. So I was kind of always behind the scenes and kind of just encouraging her to just kind of get to the end of the, get to the end of the level and get to the next level. And it was just, it's, it's kind of that I'm just bringing that to what I'm doing now. But I really think it was more that the kids wanted it. You know, the kids wanted a place to play, and they wanted to compete. They were like, okay, well, some of them don't. Some of them are very happy to just be there and play with their friends, but others of them would really like to compete, and that's what we were kind of tapping into. We don't have a lot of money, like our students, student are a lot of free and reduced lunch. So it was hard for them while we were on lockdown to be able to find a computer that they could possibly play Rocket League on or find a computer for Overwatch. So our Overwatch team, we had six kids, that was it. And you need six or more to play Overwatch. You need at least six and some subs. So we never had subs because we only had those six that had good enough computers to game. And then if their internet went out, they were, you know, they were not able to play. But Rocket League was nice because it was cross-platform, so they could play on the Xbox or they could play on, you know, the Switch, or they can play on anything and still be all part of the same team. So that was a lot, that was a lot nicer for us. And it was, it's free. Like, I love that it's all free, because if it wasn't free, we would not be able to play. Like, we would definitely not be able to do the, you know, a hundred dollars a kid for everything that they want to play.
I mean, and that's something, again, I'm a teacher, everybody's a teacher here. That's one of the things that's always top of mind, you know, when I'm putting together stuff regarding State Esports as equity, and how can we make sure as many kids as possible can participate? And, you know, for those watching, maybe don't know what cross-platform is. Cross-platforms are games that are able to be played on different consoles or computers or all of the above. And through Garden State Esports, we offer 11 different games that kids can play. And we break them down into seasons, and the seasons follow traditional, you know, athletic seasons here in New Jersey. So we have a fall, winter, spring season. But every season, there are free games. Every season, there are games rated E for everybody, so we can make sure our middle schoolers can play. And one of the things that we make sure that we do is we look at those games that are cross-platform, free to play, and we make sure we provide them, you know, so that way everybody can be involved. And on top of that is, you know, of the games that we offer, we have two that cost money, right? Overwatch and a new game we just added called Knockout City is about $20 per account. We have relationships with those developers where if a school has a student that can't afford the game, we have copies of the game for them. So, you know, equity is always really important. And, you know, I have relationships with vendors who are able to get the equipment that schools need, whether it's a Switch, whether it's a computer, and very competitive pricing. I wish Garden State Esports could get the equipment for everybody, but we're not at that point yet. But as of now, we can get the games for everybody. We provide the platform for free, the games for free. So we're really excited about that piece. And, you know, it's a good story, Christine, to hear and keep, you know, help us keep in mind how important equity is to make sure we keep as many kids as involved as possible. And even in the same vein, you know, one of the things that I'm really excited about that we added competition-wise this season is chess. You know, not only is it, a lot of districts are coming on board because maybe they have chess teams, but there's not like a real official chess league in New Jersey. But chess is, you know, you can play on any device. We use chess.com. And it's kind of neat to see, you know, these schools were maybe not so sure about games and bringing the games into the class between the CTE stuff that we're doing and chess. We have more districts than ever joining, and that's their starting point. But I know, Jim, you said that your superintendent approached you as well. What was he looking to do up by you with esports?
Well, originally, I got approached because we had some extra money from the Special Olympics through one of our Play Unified grants. And, you know, right after COVID shut everything down, you know, Special Olympics approached him and said, listen, we've got this money. It's got to be spent by the end of the school year. Let's come up with some ideas. And esports was one of those areas where everybody could recognize that it's growing. It's going to become popular. It's going to be a thing, right? So we kind of just leaned into that. And, you know, being a math teacher, I, you know, created and started a STEAM program at my middle school. I'm now, you know, creating and, you know, re-establishing the computer science program at the high school. You know, I'm kind of the go-to tech guy, if you will. So my superintendent reached out to me and just asked, you know, what do you know about this? What can we do about, you know, to get into this space? You know, what can we do to use this Play Unified money to our advantage to create this program? And, you know, after some brainstorming, we settled on Rocket League for a lot of the reasons that were brought up, you know, the cross-platform. At that point, you know, it was an idea. We didn't know what devices kids had access to. There were a bunch of games that were thrown out in our brainstorming sessions, and I finally, you know, convinced everybody Rocket League was the way to go. I mean, it's, it's race car soccer, right? Who doesn't love race cars and soccer? And on top of that, it's, you're able to play it from so many different devices, whether it's a PC, PlayStation, Xbox, Nintendo Switch, all of which kids have, more than likely, they have at least one of those at home. You know, so we were able to settle on Rocket League as our game of choice for the, the kind of pilot season, if you will. And then, you know, we had such a great turnout. You know, I ended up having practices, as I called them, Monday through Friday for, you know, about an hour to an hour and a half every day. And the kids just had a blast. You know, we had a great time. The kids were getting that connection that they were missing from not being in school, and they were, you know, able to talk to each other through Discord and things like that. And it just, it went from there. And, you know, we're constantly building it. And, you know, I think now bringing the CTE connection into it, it's, it's opening up even more doors. You know, we, we mentioned the logo design contest and things like that. And, you know, those kind of contests allow us to bring in a whole new set of kits, you know, your artistic kits. They've got something that they can look forward to now, and it's not about playing the game, right? It's about how can they do something to help the team and help the school? And that's, to me, that's just a really neat challenge. It's a really, really great opportunity to be able to bring to not just my school, but to Garden State Esports as a whole.
I mean, it's neat. It's neat to hear, you know, I do the same thing at my school is the biggest, you know, I guess, addition to, you know, playing in the competition is our production side, where we have kids who just want to call the action. We have kids who want to run the Twitch stream. They want to moderate the Twitch stream, create the graphics and the videos for it, right? So content creation is such a huge part. And so, you know, similar to you, is I, you know, I have sixth or eighth graders. I have kids who come and they say, hey, you know, I love video games. I know I'm not that good. I just want to be a part of this. Like, what can I do? And to have those extra roles to get these kids involved, because you know, it's funny is both at my school as well as, you know, I have the data from the league as a whole. Most of the kids who come out for esports aren't involved in other stuff. They're not in clubs. They're not really into sports, right? This is kind of their thing. So to be able to provide the competition for them, but again, to be able to provide the CTE stuff, the competitions for them around the industry-based things where they can do edit, you know, video editing, graphic design. fandom art is really big where they, you know, draw or create their favorite characters and stuff like that. So to be able to add that, I think, is a really exciting thing that we're going to be offering this year through Garden State Esports. I'm really happy that the Gruden Foundation saw our vision for it. Because, you know, with their support, we're going to be able to go real big and do some cool stuff with that. But the other thing that's kind of neat, Jim, that echoes a story that I hear through Garden State Esports a lot, is you had that money or you needed to find that money. We've had quite a few schools, you know, use SR2 money, Title I, II, and IV money. You know, even go out and get sponsorships to support their team. Or, you know, hopefully, if they had that money in a budget for STEM, you know, one of the things I always make sure I talk to districts about is getting to understand that esports is an investment in your STEM program. You know, there, there's some studies out there that show like 82% of kids who aren't in esports team go on to major in a STEM field when they go to college. But, you know, those same devices that you use to play esports after school can be used during the day for a robust STEM program, and then that's what I teach during the day, right? So, you know, we're doing video game design. We're doing editing. We're doing, I'm doing some cool stuff with Rocket League and artificial intelligence with my kids. And to, you know, use those devices during the day, and then magically, they transform into the esports arena, and their parents are coming to watch, and their friends are coming to watch the matches, and the kids are calling the action. And it's really neat what we've been able to do with esports, and it's really just functioning in a way that's bringing out the most in kids. And, you know, I think the other piece, and this is something too, I'd be curious about, Christine. I know for me, social-emotional learning is so important, especially as kids come back and things are starting to look super sketchy again, and we don't know where we're going to be. You know, we have a social-emotional learning curriculum that we launched last year about this time. And when we've won some awards for that, it's Castle Aligned, and Castle, you know, brought us into their SEL Providers Council and stuff like that. So we're doing a lot with Castle around social-emotional learning. But we've also been able to get something together with Rutgers, where we're going to be doing some social-emotional learning studies with Rutgers School of Psychology and their School of Social Work around esports and social-emotional learning. You know, Christine, from your experience, you know, especially with COVID, kids being home and maybe still being able to be involved in esports, are you like me, seeing kids form new friend groups, seeing kids, you know, kind of flourish a little bit?
Most definitely. I actually had a student in one of my classes last year that he just, he wasn't doing well. He wasn't motivated. He didn't really seem to be getting anything out of my class at all. And then I sent an email about Overwatch. And this kid, he just came out of nowhere, and he just started doing his work, and he started doing really well. And he's like, yeah, I want to be, I want to do Overwatch. And then like, once he started doing Overwatch, he was, he was just, something clicked in him, and he wasn't, he wasn't, I think honestly, he was depressed for a while, just, you know, being, being away from everybody and not, not being able to be out. And I just think it was just so good for definitely him. But I think it was honestly great for the other kids as well. He, he was just amazing and just came really out of his shell and just started, started doing some great stuff. And just having him in class and also having him on one of our esports teams, I was just able to really see him flourish. And I had our, one of our Rocket League kids, same thing. Like, I had him in class. He was doing okay. And then once he, once he got on the Rocket League team and he started playing more Rocket League, he started doing more assignments as well and just doing better in his classes. And I do think that this is just so good for those students because they're not just playing video games. They're playing video games as a team. They're talking with other teammates. They're building strategies. They're building relationships. And they're just getting out of their shells, and they're finally finding kids that are very much like them rather than going online and just, hey, yeah, I'll go ahead and join a team with, you know, these guys. These people are real, and they are right in front of you. They are going to your school with you, and I And I feel like they're, they're gonna be friends for a long time, because they have that, they have that link. Just the same as if you were on a sports team, on a real like traditional sports team, you know, with the other baseball players. You, you have, you have a, you know, a general, just like an easiness around those other baseball players. Or, you know, your other football players, like, you know, you get together again in ten years at your reunion and, and you, you reminisce about, you know, old times. Where if they're doing esports, they could actually do esports past here. So we're really building that for them to be able to get scholarships and to be able to maybe go into a very lucrative business right now. Esports is completely booming and you don't have to play video games in order to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we didn't even jump into, to that whole side of it and uh how schools are offering varsity letters, which makes their college application, you know, more appealing to get scholarships, because there's so many at the collegiate level. And then, yeah, like you said, esports being one of the fastest-growing industries in the world and heavily, heavily uh, you know, biased towards STEM. But that's, that's, I mean, that's what it's all about, you know, I, I'm sure Jim has the same stories, I have the same stories of kids who came out. And, you know, I know at my school and some other schools tie uh attendance behavior and grades to participation. And even those schools who choose not to are still telling that same story of kids who are coming out, finding a home, finding a friend group that they, you know, didn't know that they have. And, you know, I think it's one of those things where, number one, uh, people who don't maybe understand are very quick to dismiss kids who describe themselves as gamers and that's kind of like one of their personalities, that's who they are. Uh, but number two, to, to bring games into the schools and give them that same opportunity as traditional sports to, to connect and build those relationships a hundred percent, uh, couldn't be any more, that's really cool.
Yeah, I know, um, for me, we had a, an end-of-the-year um award ceremony at my school. And up until that point, I had kept it um kind of a secret from the kids that we were actually giving varsity letters for our esports team. And um, I had two sisters, one of them is a sophomore, one of them is a graduating senior. And they didn't really do anything outside of esports. And when I called their names and gave them varsity letters at the award ceremony, the, the sheer happiness in, in their faces and, and their parents in the crowd too, uh, it was just amazing, you know? And I think a lot of people may not realize that, you know, you've got those opportunities. You've got, you know, potential for varsity um programs. You've got all the scholarship money that's becoming available now for esports and for the, you know, the team behind the team for an esports program. You know, there's, there's so many opportunities out there um to take, you know, all of these skills that we're, we're teaching to the next level, whether that be professional or that be collegiate, you know? You've got a ton of opportunities for sure.
Absolutely. So as we move towards the end of the broadcast, um, I, I, we've had a couple conversations throughout the past year and a half, Chris. And, you know, obviously today, the, the positives over, are, are overwhelming to have an esports team in your district. So if you're a student out there, a, a kid or even a parent, um, and your school district doesn't have an esports team, what would be the first couple steps to, to make that happen in their district?
Yeah, I mean, so the first thing you want to do is you want to start to, you know, talk to your stakeholders, talk to your board of ed, talk to your superintendents. Um, make sure that this is something they're gonna be on and, and supportive of. Talk to IT, a lot of people forget to, to have the conversations with IT, because they're gonna be the gatekeepers when it comes to getting online and getting the devices online and getting the games installed. Um, but ultimately, you know, uh, uh, like Christine, you know, we're, we're seeing a lot of Christines in the league. It's maybe somebody who's not necessarily a gamer, but is one of those teachers that kids love, right? More than half of the coaches in our league don't play video games. But they were the teacher that the kids went to and said, hey, we really want to do this, you know, will you be that teacher in the room with us? Um, so you, you know, you need to find somebody to, to be your club advisor, uh, but they don't have to be a gamer. But once you identify who's gonna run the day-to-day, once you have, you know, uh, the buy-in from the stakeholders and Garden State Esports is helping to help, you know, with the buy-in piece as well. Um, head over to Garden State Esports, gsesports.org. Uh, it's a hundred percent free to join, there's just a quick registration. Uh, somebody from the team reaches out, we help you and see where you are in the program. If you need help getting equipment, we help you get equipment. Uh, but ultimately, you know, the um, September seventeenth, I believe, we start our fall season. We launch the uh, the CTE Kodak contests, we launch uh our Rocket League and Smite Championship season, where kids can win state championships. We launch our casual uh games where kids can play every day of the week, you know, a different game with Garden State Esports. And uh, you, you get to join a community of a hundred and thirty New Jersey school districts who are already uh participating. So uh, Garden City Sports has everything that you need. And so um, once you uh, once you have somebody who wants to run the program for you, reach out to us, get registered and, and we will help you every step of the way.
Awesome, thank you so much, Chris. Jim, Christine, thank you both for joining the broadcast today. Obviously, Chris, thank you and Garden Sport, Garden State Esports uh, uh, doing some incredible things. And I also want to say thank you to the viewer out there, if you're watching live, thank you. If you're watching this on recording, thank you as well. We're so proud of the community that we're growing here in these Facebook Live sessions. So if you like what you saw here today, you want us to keep doing this type of content, drop this video a like, leave us a comment. But really, uh, what really helps our broadcast grow is for you to share this post. So thank you, everyone, for watching. We have passed fifty-one, fifty-two hundred followers uh here on Facebook, broken fifty-two hundred on Twitter. So we just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for the support. Um, I want to let everyone know that future Facebook Live events will be announced on ngsp.org uh through School Board Notes and through our Facebook page. So like I said, you're already here, click that like button so you can be notified, we do go live in the future. Thank you all so much. Uh, again, thank you to our panel today and I hope everyone has a great rest of their week and a successful start to the school year upcoming in a couple of weeks here. So good luck, um, it's, it's ever-changing, so yeah, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Mike, for having us and uh thanks to school boards for always being so supportive of the work that we're doing with uh Garden State Esports. Thank you guys, thanks everybody.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thanks for coming, awesome, thanks.
Have a good one.
Take care.